Well, it's 5:30 in time to call our meeting to order. This is the joint meeting of the Aberdeen City Council and the County Commission. And Mr. Chair, I see you have a quorum. Carl, roll call for us, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Here. Please join us, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now start, I apologize, it's not going to be real comfortable in here. It's not all that comfortable right now, and it's not going to get any better. So, we got the air conditioner running, but it's not going to keep up, so we'll just have to put up with it. We have two items on our agenda tonight. They are both rezoning, the second of which is the one which I presume all of you people are here related to. Just a curiosity, is anyone here from the public to speak for or against ordinance 180603, the first one on our agenda? Okay, as long as we know that, we will...
That'd be two of us.
Yeah, okay. Hi. The first one.
I'm fine.
Okay. As long as we know that, we will start with that understanding. It's ordinance 180603. Ken, could you give us a little description?
The petitioner is requesting this petition to rezone in order to bring proposed Lot 1 into a zoning district that is consistent with its size. This petition to rezone was approved by the Joint City/County Planning Commission on June 19th, 2018, with the stipulation that the accompanying plat must be approved and filed with the Brown County Register of Beeds. Staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Rux, second by Olson, to approve. Questions or comments from the council? Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunstness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Our second is ordinance 180604, or 477. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Go ahead.
I would like to call the Brown County Commission to order regarding ordinance 476 on the county side. I have an entertaining motion to approve. So, second. Move by Justin Sutton, second by Fishback. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Thanks. Sorry for ignoring you there for a second. The next is ordinance 180604, or 477, for the county. And what we have intend to do is, Ron is going to, our city attorney is going to go through an explanation of some of the concerns and situations related to this, when we have a rezoning ordinance that is contentious for those for and against. When that is done, we will hear from the public that wants to speak on this. Obviously, we're not going to let everybody, well, if you all want to speak, we'll let you all speak, I guess, but obviously, you don't all want to speak. What we will do is, we'll hear comments from the public as long as they stay on topic and they don't repeat themselves. Following that, we will hear the recommendation from Ken, from what he has experienced in his office and at the previous Planning Commission meetings. And then the county will take this up first, and then the city. So, with that, let us start with our city attorney and an explanation of some of the things we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mayor. I want everyone to understand that these comments are going to be directed both to the substance of what you have to deal with, and importantly for us as we walk through this is the procedure. And it gets pretty complicated, so please bear with me on this. The proposed ordinance change involves property that's out in the three-mile jurisdiction of the city. That means it's within, it's outside of the three, of the city limits, but within three miles of the city. By statute, both the city and the county have the ability to regulate zoning within that particular area. Each of the city and the county have adopted comprehensive zoning plans for either the county or for the city. Each has appointed a planning commission, a separate commission, that represents its particular governing body. For our, for the city, it's the City Planning Commission; for the county, it's the County Planning Commission. However, when formal decisions are made, whether it's a recommendation by either the planning commissions, or an ordinance approval, or disapproval by the bodies at this stage, these meetings are jointly held. And the purpose of the meeting isn't necessarily because the parties are going to agree, but it's to give the applicant, the petitioner, and those who want to speak for or against it, an opportunity to come to just one hearing. So, it's a matter of convenience primarily for those of you who are here to speak, but each body is independently going to make its own determination on the merits of the particular ordinance in front of it. So, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that. As you're addressing this room, you'll be talking to both, but each is going to make its independent determination. Now, zoning too becomes a complicated process, and we, the city, have some procedures that we have to follow, and also procedures that we have to anticipate. If you'll note that there is a clipboard going around asking for the signatures and addresses of anybody who is here to object to this particular ordinance change. And the reason for that is there is a city ordinance that would allow, depending on the outcome of tonight's meeting, that would allow the petitioner to arguably refile with, in less than a year, if they can get a certain percentage of the people who have opposed tonight, to sign on to a potential refiling within a year. I need you to understand that we're not a court of law, so you don't have a court reporter taking down everything, but we do have a record. And the record is really our minutes that are prepared by our finance office. And so, for purposes of the city's actions, we intend, unless somebody wants to take the clipboard back and take their name out, all of the names of the people who are appearing in opposition tonight will be listed in the minutes. And it's the minutes that a court would be looking at down the road. So, that, I want that to be our record, and I want our record to be full, to be a good, accurate record of what we've got here tonight. So, if you are here to speak in opposition to ordinance 180604, and you're willing to have your name put in the minutes of this, go ahead and please sign that petition. So, if there's anybody who needs to change that, please do. Now, I want to talk to you in a formal manner just about what it is when a governing body is exercising its zoning authority. By ordinance, our governing body, the city council, has to abide by certain procedures. By statute, and to some degree by their own Brown County ordinances, the Brown County commissioners are also required to follow certain requirements. What I wanted to do is make sure that we all understand what it is that the two bodies, the council and the commission, are having to decide today. So, let's talk about zoning ordinances. And again, I'm sorry, but I think it's always important, especially when I assume that I'm dealing with smart people, I always think it's best that they understand upfront what's going on. And so, I'm going to assume, unless somebody shows me contrary, that I'm dealing with a bunch of smart people here tonight. So, we have a significant function of local government is to provide for the orderly development of, by enacting and enforcing zoning ordinances. The ultimate and general purpose of zoning ordinances are traditionally associated with the police power, the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, peace and order, and public comfort and convenience. I'm not, what I'm reading to you is a South Dakota Supreme Court decision that kind of walked through what zoning ordinances are and what those mean for people who are either wanting a change or looking at a restriction of their ability to use their property in a certain way. Restrictions on property, in this case, whether it's an agricultural district wanting to be changed to a mini agricultural district, must bear a substantial relation to, and here's the magic word, public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. That is pretty broad, but that is what these two bodies are looking at when they're making their decisions tonight. Does the proposed change further the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare, or does it not? It's important also to understand that, excuse me. Even though private property cannot be taken without due process of law, and we're all familiar with the Fifth Amendment condemnation standards, this limitation does not shield private property from regulations such as zoning. So, the idea that you can use your property for whatever you want is not correct, and it's not legally sustainable. Regulations of property which are implemented under the police power are perfectly okay. The essential object of zoning regulations is to stabilize the use or uses of the property, to adopt measures to regulate property use in conformance with a comprehensive plan, and I talked to you about that. And it is not to provide for the highest and best use of property, or to permit the maximum possible enrichment of a particular landowner. Instituting or upholding zoning district regulations is within the powers of both of these bodies. So, I want to make sure that everybody is clear with that. As we move forward, there will be a requirement that we pay attention to some of the procedures that both bodies have. One of our procedures is that the, by ordinance, the city council cannot approve a zoning change that is not approved by a majority of the entire membership of the county commission. And that has to do, again, with the idea that both parties are working together in a partnership in that third mile, in that three-mile jurisdiction. And if either one of the parties is not on board by a majority of its entire membership, then by our ordinance, we are not allowed to approve the zoning ordinance change. So, with that, I am done with my comments to the council and to the commission, and we'll hand it over.
All right. Brett Bill, the Planning and Zoning Director, is not able to be here tonight, but he and Mr. Hubbard have been involved in this along the way. So, Ken, can you just give us a little narrative as to how we have reached this point?
The petitioner is requesting this petition to rezone in order to bring the property into a zoning district that is consistent with its size. At the March 8th, 2018, meeting, the Aberdeen Board of Zoning Adjustment approved the petitioner's appeal to operate an event center at this location with the stipulations that a separate lot for this use is plotted and rezoned into the proper mini-ag district. On June 14th, 2018, the Aberdeen Board of Zoning Adjustment also approved two approach separation variances with the concurrence of the Aberdeen Township Board, the Brown County Highway Department, and the Brown County Planning and Zoning Department. At the Joint City/County Planning Commission meeting on June 19th, 2018, the City Planning Commission voted 3-2 to approve the zoning, rezoning request, and the County Planning Commission voted 7-0 to deny the request. Staff recommends approval of this petition to rezone.
All right, Ken, thank you. What we will do is, we'll take comments from the people that are here before we turn it over to the county for their discussion and vote. I will begin with anyone among the people who are bringing this to us, who want to speak about why they are bringing this, and then we will open up to the others in the room to speak for or against.
All right, I'm Jack with JGH Construction, and been working with the Hedges since all fall time, et cetera, on this project. And we did go to the rezoning board in March and got approval, as Ken has gone through and talked about. Building's roughly a little under 4,000 square feet, it's got 12-foot sidewalls, it's going to be plotted on three acres of land, it'll be well insulated, it'll have 42 to 47 parking stalls that are on the hard surface, and then, of course, they've got enough field to the north of where this building's going to be for overflow parking. It's going to be used for wedding venues, meeting rooms, family, and possibly class reunions. There are a couple different candidates to go with it. Building's located approximately 82 feet from the property line from the east to the west, and approximately 81 feet from the south property line to the building itself. There were some, there'll be no liquor license purchased by the owners, they'll leave that up to the individuals that come out, they'll have to go through the county to get that. There's a possible chance of putting fence along the south side of the building to help Aspire, if there's any concerns of them coming across, or bushes and trees, et cetera, to deter that part.
Anything else from those bringing it here that want to? I think people are probably quite familiar with the issue here by this time, so. What I will do is, if we hear specific things from opposition, I would give, I'll give you a chance when we're done to briefly respond to that also.
Are you having a question?
Well, we're going to do the public first, and then the county, and then us.
Okay.
Okay. Did you identify yourself for the minutes?
Yeah, I'm with JGH Construction.
Okay.
I said that.
All right. All right. Good. Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Gentlemen over here, you had your hand up before, or somebody would ask each who come up to identify yourself for the minutes, and tell us what you want us to know.
Good evening, members of the council, county commission. My name's Jennifer Gray. I'm the executive director at Aspire here in Aberdeen. First of all, as we look at this venue this evening, as a citizen of Aberdeen and a former chamber ambassador, personally, I love the idea. I think this really could be a benefit to the Aberdeen community. But I am here in my role as executive director at Aspire to oppose the rezoning as it's been proposed to you this evening. We are the owner and operator of a group home that's immediately south of the property that's being proposed for this venue. Currently, that property has 10 individuals, they are adults with intellectual disabilities. Because of the nature of the services that they receive, those individuals have varying levels of abilities. Many of them have community safety skills that we have concerns as we talk about the health and the safety of the members of the neighborhood. We have some limited capacity in what we're able to do with those 10 individuals. Some of them choose to leave our facility, and we need to help them in being safe as they're, as they're leaving, as they should not be without staff supervision. I did have the opportunity to speak with Janet Hedges this morning to express some of those concerns, though we also have some other residents, again, they all have varying individual needs. But some of them have lived in the community before, they've lived in less restrictive settings, and due to the choices that they make, it is not safe for them to be in an area where they can, where they can be off on their own. They do not make good choices at times, and my concern, as I expressed to Mrs. Hedges, was if you build it, they will come. There are some residents that we have over there that would not be invitees to the functions that they would be having at that particular facility, and I would have concerns that as there is music, and as there is activity, and as there is drinking, even though there is not a liquor license that would be there, that the likelihood of those residents leaving our property and going over to a venue for which they're not invited is pretty, is significantly high for a few of them. As the neighbors, you will hear from others, I'm sure, tonight, but the peace order and the comfort and convenience of this nice country, relatively quiet neighborhood, is how I know that we would like to be able to see it remain. I have concerns that I have one staff that oversees this home after 11 o'clock at night, and if there is loud activity that's going on with potentially 300 people at a venue across the street, music or bands or those kinds of things, I have high concerns about the ability for us to be able to safely serve the population that we serve in that neighborhood, that we are not an incarceration facility, as I told Mrs. Hedges this evening, at 11 o'clock at night when there's one staff, doors don't lock down. And people reside in that home like you and I do, and if they don't make good choices, we have the liability for the safety of those residents in that home, and that would be my concern with this particular venue going in. I would ask you to vote no on the rezoning this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
I try to represent some of these people fairly well, hopefully. We're, again, like Jennifer said, we're not opposed to the type of facility that is being built. I think it'd be great for the community, be a great asset just money-wise and income and everything else, but what we do oppose is where it's being put, and that's what I would be talking about. First thing is safety. Just got some numbers here. Last time we had the vote here, the number was thrown out by Jack that there would be 300 people and about 40 parking places. So, I did some crunching on the numbers here, and I figured four per car, there'd be 35 cars left on the road, I figured about 19 feet per car, and those are pickups, they would have no leeway for anywhere in between, so I figured there's probably a few Volkswagens and stuff out there like that. So, you know, kind of split it. So, anyway, so we come down nine feet per car, it comes up 665 feet, and that comes to 221 yards, or the equivalent of over two football fields that could be possibly parked on the county road or township road.
Just as a matter of clarification, chief, would that be, would they be allowed to park on that county road, or would that be a violation?
It could possibly be a violation.
Okay.
Okay. Now, due to the independence of all the people around, such as myself, I want to go there, and I probably want to leave at 10 o'clock, so I want to take two people. So, I split it down the middle between two people and four people, and I want three people per car. And it comes to 60 cars per, parked unload 19 feet again. Parallel parking, I also checked angler parking, it still comes out the same, because I measured the parking lot this morning, 1,140 feet, that is 380 yards, a little short of four football fields, so people that are going to be parking on that road. Now, some of these people may select not to park on that road, and fear of Druks Court may be a good place to do park, and that's our property, it's their property. So, and I live Cattywappas across it, I know I'll probably see some in my area. Again, no objection about the building and everything, it's just all about safety and the peace that we have out there. We bought property out there, a lot of people have a lot of $300,000 houses out there that bought to be quiet, and it is quiet out there. All the time, it's quiet. Yes, we do have parties such as birthday parties, people that graduate, and the cars are all parked within the zone there, there's never any on the road. So, I mean, they maintain, and, and once in a while, we have a fireworks deal on the Fourth of July to commemorate our flag there. Okay. Basically, it was talked about a Canton barn down in Canton. So, we did an overhead or overfly thing, and basically, I called the lady down there, her name's Kelly Blackstone, and I asked her, I says, you know, you're here to make money and have a good time, and people are here to have a good time, but what is some of the drawbacks? And she says, there's two things you're going to have, traffic and noise. It's just a given, and that's what we don't want out there. I mean, that's where we live. We have 14 residents out there that live on about five-acre plots, the rest of us live on three, there's another 14, and I won't go down to Darian Drive or anything like that, but if you want to add them to, they're going to suffer the traffic consequences too. Where these people are going to go, they could go on Highway 12, they go to Highway 281, and things like that, so it's, it's not a good deal. So, after I talked to Kelly, she told me that, then I called Harrisburg, and the other thing about the Canton one is, that thing is listed as one mile away from the town, and we show a house that is probably, I'll give the benefit of doubt, a half of an mile away, but it's probably about three-quarters away. So, they've got a little bit of their privacy there, and they've left that for the people. The people that own it live on the property to make sure things work. Okay? Harrisburg, Meadow Barn, County Road. Beautiful facility, great facility, love them both. Actually, my daughter was there this weekend. You know, apple orchards around, all kinds of stuff, kids for things to do, but, don't you see? And traffic. And I also talked to Katie Johnatt, and basically, they both gave us the same answer, that's what you're going to expect. So, I've got a map of the one of Canton Barn, if you want it, and I've got the one where we live and where the proposal's going to be, but it's...
Is your map here?
Sure. You can, you can put them on there. So, that was mine, also, I guess, for the heck of it, I brought up a couple other barns. Again, they're all very nice. One's in Colorado, one's in Tennessee, so I wanted to see what the other states do. They're all nice tucked away in the woods, there's nobody around them, and it's quiet. I didn't take time to call anybody, but, I mean, if you do the overhead, the look, the 360s and stuff, it's there. All I can say is thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for coming. Ken, a little clarification, were there parking space requirements in the permit for this, within the three mile?
Yes, they have not applied for any building permits at this time.
Okay.
But based on the discussions and the plans that they have submitted, it would be required to have one per 100 square feet of gross floor area. So, what I think, they were proposing a 3,200-square-foot building, it would equate to 32 stalls. They have provided on their site plan for more than that, and I would let them explain it, but I think that their intention is not to park on the public roads, but to offer parking on the pasture or the grass on the private property.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Anyone else to speak for or against? Judge?
I just wanted to touch on the legalities that this was originally zoned, and is still zoned, as ag property. The use that's being requested does not fit, and did not fit, any type of special use or special exception. There was an appeal made to allow this use, and the appeal was approved contingent upon it being rezoned to mini-ag. In both districts, primary requirement is that there's a residence on the property. With this type of zoning under this proposal, Steve mentioned that in other areas, some of those locations, the people live on the property. There's no proposal or no requirement that includes that, so there's no direct supervision other than as a manager with personal interest, and I understand that that would be a personal interest to make sure to keep the residents happy. But I think that's a concern, you're really trying to carve out something special in a residential area. And I just wanted to state that from the standpoint of what we're talking about in the legalities, that's what people expected, as a residential area, both under the ag property, as it is currently zoned, or under a mini-ag.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Sherri Weisgram. I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little emotional. I live on Drew Court, and this is directly 82 feet from my home. And I would like to know from you, have any of you been out there? Have you driven the land out there? Have you looked at how close this is going to be to our homes? My husband and I waited a great number of years to buy a home, and we built our dream home on a piece of property that's beautiful. Why do we have to listen to this noise? 82 feet, guys, that's less than my driveway! 82 feet, guys, that's less than my driveway! Would you like that noise in your backyard? When you want solid, quiet, and to listen to the beautiful birds? I get to listen to the birds every night, I get to see the sunset every night. Why should that be taken away from me and my neighbors? We don't deserve that. We bought our land because we were proud of it and we wanted to put a home on it that was worth something to us, and we want to be able to have our families out there and our children out there. But every single weekend, we're going to be disturbed. We're not going to have any peace and quiet out there anymore. Because these venues, I, I am super excited that that venue is something that wants to be done in Aberdeen, but not 82 feet from my home. How many of you have been out there? Have you seen how close it is?
It's not 82 feet, I don't believe.
They said it was 82 feet from the road.
It's 82 feet from the road, but how, how much is it from...
My, my house is right, my backyard is right there. It doesn't matter, that, that is going to travel.
I'm just telling you, it's not 82, it's more than 82 feet.
But it's awfully close, and it's less, it's less than my driveway, and that's very close. And I just want you to consider how you would feel if this was this close to your home, and every weekend you had to listen to the noise and have the traffic in your backyard and have maybe alcohol served at a venue where they're going to be throwing things and you're going to be responsible for cleaning that up. There's not going to be any cops out there? There's no, is there security at this venue to watch out for the people that are there and all of us who live in the neighborhood? No. I just want you to consider us and our families, because this, this property and these homes mean a great deal to us, and we sought this property on purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I would, Jack, I would give you a little time here if you want to respond to anything specific that you heard there that you, you feel is, requires a response.
Yeah, as stated before, parking is like roughly 47 little spots on the site itself that's hard surface. The rest of the acreage would be used for overflow parking. It would not be on the streets. And then also the distance from the corner of the building to the adjacent property to the east would be 140 feet, just to get to their property line, let alone their house. And as far as security, Janet can talk about that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate hearing the questions and the discussion, and there are some things that we would like to address. First of all, let's take a look at the neighborhood that is currently there. So, one of the people here I know is Mr. Drew, and his residence is a half a miles north and a half a mile east from this property, so I don't even think he can see it. Drew Court, there happen to be businesses in Drew Court. When Ms. Weisgram talks about noise, they have a race car that, you know, is started up, and they have loud noises in the neighborhood. There's an electrical place, and I know there's a daycare. There's nine, nine large shops or Quansits in this area. Darian Drive, I know many of you are residents there, you are a half a mile east and up to two blocks south of this proposed property. If you go a half a mile east, further east, you are within businesses that are currently there. Hoven Auto Repair, Speedies, Wall Trucking, Shop Pallets, Weigle Construction, they would be the same distance that we are, would be from their residence. And then there's some people that are on 385th, and I know the Humane Society is like a half a mile south of them. So just to kind of put in perspective about this quiet, family, country neighborhood that's there, there's lots of things that are already out there that are commercial and business and noise. So our property would be a half a mile from the property on Darian and Melgar Road and the Ron Drew property. You know, yes, Drew Court, there are some that are a bit closer, but a little further than was reported, you know, so. Also, let's talk about Aspire. I appreciate that Jennifer took time to talk with me this morning. We are aware of that. So, when Aspire brought that property, it's a former Fisher Quint home, there was nothing out there. It was wide open spaces. But as she said, Drew Court built, and they are there. So I ask her currently, residents, because they aren't locked in, she said there's a buzzer alarm, and they're curious, you know, like people are, and they do wander off currently. So I ask her, "How are they ensuring their safety currently? What can be done? How can we partner to ensure that?" So some things that we talked about were some shrubbery or trees, because along the south side of their property, it's quite dense, but on the north side, it has thinned out over the years, because this farm that is now surrounded by commercial houses, things like that, has been in my husband's family for 75 years. All of a sudden, it's not a farm in the country anymore, as you can appreciate. But we talked about what we could do, so building, putting trees along there, a fence to deter residents, but also ask her what current protocol is. If a resident currently wanders off, how do we ensure their safety? Do we have someone to call? Do we transport them home? Because she had told me that this is currently happening on occasion. So what can we do? Should we have private security there? Should we have cameras? You know, I want to partner with Aspire to ensure that. You know, they want the wide open, quiet land. I don't begrudge them for that. But again, as we know, as was in Sunday's paper, look out west, you know, because development's coming, and as property owners, we're looking at developing our property as well, and, you know, there's not going to be beanfields there, you know, going forward. I know everyone likes that, but what's practical, what's economical, and as, as owners, we have to look at what the next step's going to be. So, we talked about parking, I think Jack addressed that. We have designated parking required by the ordinances, but also, we own almost 200 acres there, there's plenty of places to park. Currently, I know there are events and activities at some of these homes, they are parking on the roads and the ditches because of the property out there. We've been out there on occasion in the past, so there has been some of that going on when they have their events or backyard parties, but none of that would happen. We have parking, we want them to be there, and we have the room to do that. So, safety. So we talked about, you know, some people talked about, you know, we want this to be number one. And someone said, "Well, we own the property that is on a long Highway 12." Well, I think if any of you saw the paper, on Sunday, or last weekend, there was a major accident, because that's 65 miles an hour that people are pulling out onto a highway. Also aesthetically, there's a, the ethanol plant, and also, you know, we've done a lot of research, we too have contacted, just like you did, sir, the barns that are out there, and we've, in fact, this one that's showing is in Wisconsin. We've been to, you know, all the barns, who've talked with them, the pros, the cons, because whose money and is this ours, you know, that type of thing. We want to be a good citizen, we want to work with the people in this community. And looking out to feel country and you see a barn across the street, that still feels like country, you know? And so, we want to, you know, again, you know, work with you on that. So, these are some things, again, you know, country used to be starlight, and I know people bought property and expected it to be all country around them, but, you know, there's been developments, there's things that are coming. And so it used to be Starlight Motors or Marshall Truck Stop, after that was country. Well, it's really not anymore. If you look at all the businesses and things that are around there, we're just trying to partner with them, provide a safe area. You know, we would, again, rent this out, there'd be a contract, there'd be obligations. You know, we're putting a lot on the line, if it gets a bad reputation, we wouldn't have it rented, things like that. So, we're trying to do something, you know, with, do commissioners have any questions for us?
Well, that'll come later.
Okay.
They'll be able to ask you questions when, when they take this up and make their motion.
But, but again, you know, we're just trying to, to be transparent about what's coming here, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to work, be aware of the issues, be aware of Aspire, be aware of the neighborhoods. We would be under all the ordinances that are, you know, applicable to everyone else, and so we, we certainly will comply with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, you know, I will turn it over to Mr. Chairperson of the county, and for you is ordinance 477, presented here for possible first reading for approval.
I would entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 447, the H and H Farms to amend ordinance to rezone.
I move approval.
Second. Booed by Hanson, second by Sutton. All in favor?
Call of course, no call.
No call? Sutton?
No.
Fishback?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Hell dime, no. Rezone is denied by the county side.
Okay, thank you. I was informed earlier today that, obviously, as we heard in the introduction to this, that if the county does not ever approves this, the city's vote may be inconsequential. I have been persuaded that it may be good for the city to actually consider this, because we have been asked to do that, and rather than me making that judgment, Councilmember Roneen, you made that request at this, you know, do you want to try and make that case now that, that the city should also take this up?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, thank you. You know, I think the, I, I learned a little law a little while ago from, from Judge Anderson, and I appreciated my friend Ron Wagler's comments. The Supreme Court has addressed the issue of what a municipality is required to do in a number of instances, not specifically on zoning, at least is that, that I've been able to determine, although I, I understand Mr. Wagler found a, found a collateral precedent. But the, the Supreme Court has considered, under what circumstances, a city or a municipality is, has the right to deny requests such as, as platting requests. And what they've essentially said is that if the application meets the ordinance, okay, if it, if it meets the law, and it is an ordinance that we would typically approve, then we have an obligation to approve it. For us to deny it, the Supreme Court said in a case, I think it was Loman versus the City of Aberdeen in 1976, it was a case that, unfortunately, the city council apparently denied a request. Supreme Court said that when you deny it, when it meets the statute, that is an arbitrary and capricious act by the city. That kind of act can be then reversed by petitioners who go to court and ask the court to require us to do our duty. That's called a writ of mandamus. And what the Supreme Court said is, when we abuse our discretion, we are subject to a writ of mandamus. And for that reason, Mayor, it's my suggestion that we vote on this. If the petitioners decide to bring an action under mandamus, quite honestly, I prefer that the City of Aberdeen not be a defendant in that action. I think we should do our duty, consider this request in a careful and appropriate manner. I think we need to apply the law, and if the result of that is that we approve it, then I think the, the onus is on the, on the county, not on the city.
Okay.
May I be heard on that? I want to be in these rare instances where I'm disagreeing with one of my bosses, I guess, but...
I'm used to it.
I think the case you're referring to, Rob, was a, was a replating case.
It was replating.
And replating is a, is a distinct and different animal with very specific requirements. And there is mandatory requirements within the approval process, that those shall be. And in fact, I think on the council's consent calendar, there is a replat petition on this matter, and that should be approved. There's no question about that, because it is almost an administrative act, simply just, once you've met the, the requirements for the street layouts and things like that, it's required to be approved. However, we're not dealing with a plat, we're dealing with a zoning ordinance. My, my, my gift to you on this conversation is that there is language in our ordinance that talks about unless otherwise provided by law. And that has to do with this, with the idea that you would need the concurrence of the other governing body and that they would need to approve that by majority of the entire membership of the county commission. Obviously, they have not approved that. However, because of the caveat of otherwise, unless otherwise provided by law, and there is the potential, I suppose, of a, of a mandamus, I do not have a problem with the, with this council moving forward independently on voting for, or, or against approval of this ordinance.
As presiding officer, it's up to me to decide if we, if we take this up or not, and I don't think for myself or for the council as a whole that we're in a position where we should be trying to avoid voting on issues. So I would rule that, that we would take this up and I would open it up for a motion. However, if, if one of the council members wants to move to overturn that, five of the eight council members voting to not take this up would override my decision to take it up, so I would leave that. If any of you do not want the council, or feel it's inconsequential for us to now take this up because it has already been refused, I'd entertain a motion to overturn my ruling.
Move ordinance 180604.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to act on the rezoning request. Questions or comments from the council?
You know, I would just, I don't mean to dominate this and be the only one speaking on behalf of the city, but it does seem to me, I appreciated the people that spoke here today. You know, I see that there's a lot of passion, but what I'm hearing is, we should not approve this because of traffic. We shouldn't approve this because of safety. We shouldn't approve this because of noise. We shouldn't approve this because it's going to reduce the solitude of country living. I didn't hear anybody tell us that we shouldn't approve this because this is not an appropriate plat, that this is not an appropriate zoning. I guess the plat is later, but that this is not appropriate zoning. And it is. The, the purpose behind this, as Ken pointed out at the very beginning, is to allow this property to conform because of its size and to, and to choose an appropriate zoning for it. It was in March, I believe, that the, that, that it was considered whether or not a, a facility like this should be permitted to be built at that property. After that was approved, there was an opportunity to appeal that. There was no appeal. That's what I think you folks are complaining about. You're complaining about the use of this property, and that's not what is before us today. What is before us today is whether this is the appropriate way to zone this property, and, and clearly it is.
Other comments from the council?
Yeah.
Mark?
That property could be consumed by the city in not too long a time. I mean, it could be part of the city limits eventually, and the county would not have anything to say about it. Now, we've talked to the county before as far as bringing the, bringing the fairgrounds into the city limits, and they would make a lot of extra money on that if they would do that. Now, to me, it's a no-brainer, it makes a lot of sense to bring the fairgrounds into the city, and they would have extra tax dollars to work with. This is the same thing. They're building a building, and they're also going to pay taxes on it. So, if you, if the county's always hurting for money, they need to raise taxes. That's all there is to it, in my opinion, so.
Anyone else from the council?
I heard from the petitioner, and I heard from several other residents out in that neighborhood, and I believe that when issues come up, if, if it affects a lot of people, that is significant, and it should draw our attention. However, I must concur with Councilmember Roneen that the issue here is the plat and the rezone, not the use of that property. And from all of the complaints I heard, it was the location and what it's going to be used for, but we're not here to decide that. That should have been raised at the Board of Adjustment. I, I believe that that's where it should have been taken. It's unfortunate that it's affecting so many people, and maybe rightfully so, I'm not certain. I don't know how I'd feel if I lived in that neighborhood, but I must concur with Councilmember Roneen that we're, we're voting on a separate issue than you folks are really concerned about.
Yeah, I, I agree. I understand the arguments, I believe I under- Um, I understand the arguments, uh, I believe I understand the arguments. Um, I, I'm concerned that it appears that there, there can be no other development on this piece of property other than planting crops. And for Aberdeen to grow, um, because some of you have told me that residential's not even acceptable in that area, that, um, you know, tough decisions like these are, are made. And some of us have made those tough decisions within the City of Aberdeen, uh, close to our own homes. And so this is, you know, this is nothing new for us to have these tough decisions. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this because, um, they have every right to do this.
Uh, I did have a question, Jack or Janet, if, if one of you could answer for me. Is this going to be seasonal or is this going to be year-round?
Well, um, it's run back and forth on that and of course, you know, if it's seasonal, it can vary in children, you know, every day. And of course, um, as we said, it's our, if I'm not tax-free, not the county, not the city, so we will try to make it, uh, year-round, just to generate a revenue, um, because, you know, you know, it's a...
So I guess, and my, my reason for asking that question is then, the structure of the building will be such that there will, it'll be insulated and be for heat, so that insulation will also contain sound.
And it looks like, you know, the doors that, you know, it's gonna have a blind door effect, but there's actual closed doors there. Because, you know, in our community, it's hot, it's humid, you know, it's gonna be closed, it's gonna, like, explode and it, and it's insulated.
Yeah, it's insulated. Okay, okay.
Other questions or comments from the council? Dave?
Let's make one, one comment. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate all of you guys and I, I know it's a hard decision, but most of you guys probably lived in a bean field, are living in a bean field right now. And what would have happened if people would have come forward and said, "No, you can't build where you're at. You wouldn't be living there either." And, and I know that's hard. We all want expansion, but we don't want it in our backyards. Um, are these people that own this property, are they, you guys trying to keep them from being rezoned ever? Or is it just strictly this particular? So if they have a, uh, put up a big shop and then they have their own parties in this great big shop all summer, then, then what? Do we have a problem we have to fix too? But, um, you know, I, I understand the problem, I just, when people have their own private property and they're trying to develop it and make the city a little bit better and make it, um, what, and one of the biggest things we had in front of us is a place to have a venue for concerts and stuff and they're trying to provide that to the city. And I understand it's in your backyard, nobody wants it in their backyard, but where do you put it that it's not in somebody's backyard? And be able to be within, close into the city too. And, you know, we all have to make some type of sacrifices because of where we want to live, but yet, these people have, um, some rights as, uh, landowners to do something with their property. And without a vote, we can't, they can't do anything besides plant beans.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Clint?
Um, Jack, um, I didn't see it on the blueprints, but what is the stated maximum occupancy of this structure?
Less than three hundred.
Less than three hundred? Okay. You're figuring about three hundred, bud. And, and then for our attorney, is it true that in the Minneag District, there has to be a residence on the property?
Need to talk to Ken about that.
No.
Or is that part of the special exception?
The Minneag District typically allows for single-family residences and hobby farms. There are other special exceptions that can be approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Um, this use, because it didn't specifically, it wasn't specifically spelled out in those special exceptions, was applied for as an appeal, which is what we allow people to do in every zoning district if there's something that doesn't fit that niche in the zoning ordinance. Um, special exceptions can allow various things in that district, uh, mining operations, uh, truck repair, uh, go-kart tracks, airports, uh, public assembly places or, uh, public recreation facilities, football stadiums, drive-in movie theaters. Nothing was specifically what this use was, so we applied, we had them apply for an appeal as a event center because that was the closest title we could come up for it. Uh, but no, not every Minneag property has to have a residence before it's, um, built on.
Do you have more, Clint, or?
Nope.
Alan?
Yeah, I had, uh, wanted to reinforce some of the thoughts that were expressed earlier. Um, again, if, uh, any of us were to build on our own property, a shed or a barn, um, or a shop and use that for entertainment or for just personal use, um, and it was an attractive building, that would not be objectionable. Uh, what I see, um, ramping up here is a business that might have certainly no more than ten percent of the hours of a week and probably more like five hours a week where the serenity would be disturbed, uh, where there might be some noise, where there might be an influx of temporary traffic. Um, so, you know, if it were four night, four hours a night, twice a week, just using it as an example, that's less than five percent of the time that's being, uh, occupied. Um, I feel like the Hedges have done everything orderly, legally, uh, we couldn't have asked more of them in the process. They followed it, uh, in good faith, they've made investments. And again, these are things that we, um, encourage generally in the city. So I too would be voting, uh, affirmatively on this.
Any of you want to speak anymore? Uh, with that, before we vote, uh, I would ask our city attorney to talk about the implications of a, of a vote by the city in light of the refusal, uh, already by the county.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, I had pointed out earlier that we have an ordinance, but there's also a, a statute, uh, that requires that there be county concurrence, uh, for exercising, uh, zoning powers within that, uh, joint jurisdiction. And we have right now, um, a vote that shows that the county would not concur with the action of this council. Um, and that, uh, so our ordinance i- is in line with the statute that requires that. Um, again, however, with the potential for, for some other, uh, superior law being, being passed down, then it is possible that this could eventually result in, in actual, uh, positive action on the part of this council. So as we move forward here, and I'm not sure, you know, before the vote is taken, what I would, what I would remind everyone, and Maxine or Gary or Ernest, uh, might need to weigh in on this, but this is the joint commission, or this is a joint meeting, uh, they've already turned down first reading, we would need to have a second reading of this. Uh, so interestingly enough, it would require, I think, for us to again have a joint meeting because we still are within this extra, this, uh, joint jurisdiction. So we would have to do our second reading for, for an ordinance that you folks aren't going to be passing and won't, and won't be putting on for second reading. We will have to do it as part of the joint meeting and I'm not sure if that's next week in, in your, in your chambers. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that we understand that even though the legal effect of this action, uh, as we sit here today would not, uh, go, would not be positive because of the county concurrence requirement, uh, we will still need to conclude the action for the city council, assuming that we do have a, uh, approval for first reading tonight.
So if the council vote is, is no, we're done? If it's, if it's, uh, yes, uh, we have minimally a perfunctory, uh, second shot at it?
Right.
All right, any other questions of the council before we vote? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve this...
Mayor, get some hands up in the back.
Uh, we're ready, we're ready to vote.
I have just a question too.
Okay.
These people that are being bought, are, uh, are going, are not allowed to be bought at the...
What do you want to say?
What do you want to say?
You know, we're, we're not in a hurry to get out of here, we don't want to keep anybody from speaking, we gave everybody a chance at the beginning, so.
My name is Deb Druke. We are the ones that developed Druke Court where, which is directly across from Hedge's proposed area. She said, you said, whatever. We do not oppose development there. Residential is wonderful. These people own the whole quarter, all along Highway twelve. They have every opportunity to develop off from Highway twelve and they choose not to. We have no problem with more housing, none whatsoever. And in Mr. Remley's comments about it supposedly someday being annexed into the city as city, in the city limits, I spoke with Brett Bill at great length on that. And there is a large flood plain that runs between the city property and where this is located. And in his words, he said, "That would have to take a great act of God or money, lots of money, to make that land accessible to the city." My next point is she brought up the people that have businesses in their home. Those businesses in their home are eight to five, with the exception of Pat Weiss Graham, who does have a race car. Pat Weiss Graham is very considerate of his neighbors. He would never offend anyone or anyone, oh, just be unconsiderate. In my opinion, with the Hedges going forward as they have, wouldn't it have been considerate of them to come to the neighborhood and say, "Hey, this is what we would like to propose." And your five-hour limit on noise twice a week and it being contained within the building? How many of you gone to wedding dances, graduation parties where everybody stays right in that building? Be real about it. We also talked about the use on that gravel road. It gets traveled greatly right now, let alone put five hundred or fifty cars a weekend on that road in addition. We're lucky if we get that road graded three times a summer. Who's gonna take care of it? And then there's that fine line of responsibility of who's gonna take care of the alcohol consumption? It's out of the city limits, the police can't do it. How many sheriffs do you have to come out there and patrol? Are the Hedges going to be at every event that's there to make sure that everybody's parking where they want to or where they want them to? And then they leave. Who, who's gonna be in charge of that? There's an accident. I spoke at the last meeting where they got their approaches approved. It's an accident waiting to happen. There is a hill in the road and their approach is directly below it. Either coming out or going in, there's gonna be accidents. And then they aspire people. Come on. It's not about the money. We have no problem with them building their event center at all, but put it in the proper location where they have total access to a good paved road. That's all my comments.
Okay.
My name is Ron Druke, I've lived out there forty-five years. And there's forty-five houses within a half a mile. And half those people, I sold them lots and they bought them in good faith to be out in the country and they build nice homes and now you build this across the road? What's it do to the value of their home? Who gonna live there? You know, and I mean, it just ain't right. And they're all wonderful people. I didn't go through no real, real estate. I sold everyone on my own, Deb did all the paperwork. And we sold them to great people. And we don't have no problem out there with anybody, not one person. It's a wonderful neighborhood and we don't need that excitement across the road. Amen.
Amen. Anything else from the council before we vote? Carl, we have a motion and a second from the city to approve the rezoning for ordinance, uh, eighteen oh six oh four. Roll call, please. Councilmember Rux?
Uh, hell. Um, how about I for first reading?
Wilson?
Aye.
Um, pardon me. Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson? Aye. Motion carries. And again, just to repeat, Ron, what happens now?
Okay. And Maxine, I don't know if I should work with you on that, but we'll need to make sure that we do schedule a second reading as a joint meeting. Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
So the question, uh, I guess a question for us here at, at this point is, uh, if we have that, we're not gonna cram this into the county commission chambers with, with all of these people, um...
It's up to the commission and the council whether you want to hear it on July second. I don't think it's that strong with the pass to the city or to the council on the record.
Uh, you know, we may want to do that and I was just going to suggest that if, if any of the, uh, people from the county or the city, uh, have a change of heart to the point where they would, uh, consider voting differently, uh, next time, which would change the outcome of this, that it would be fair to the people who live out in that area to, uh, try to make that known. So, uh, uh, not everybody would necessarily have to show up again, but, uh, they would not want to get caught off guard by, uh, changes of opinion that they weren't aware of. There's no, obviously no requirement for that, but I would just suggest that, uh, if people want to change their minds, that, uh, they, they make it known and then we won't have to force everybody to show up again. But you'll have that option, we'll do it again, uh, same time, same place, next week. Or on, on July's...
Tuesday. I...
Tuesday.
Is it here or there?
Uh, we'll do, we'll do it here, just in case we need the space, if that's all right with you, Max? Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The only question I would have will be checking with our legal counsel tomorrow, but I believe this is final action to the county. And I don't, I don't feel, and maybe I'm wrong, that we would have to vote on it again.
Okay, right.
And we can show up at the joint meeting, but I think this would be considered final action on the county.
Yeah. We'd have that other ordinance to, to vote, so we'd have, we'd need the joint meeting regardless. Uh, and then I guess it would be up to a motion, uh, you know, a, a, a presiding officer decision, uh, as to how you handle it at that point.
We'll get an answer tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
If you have certification on final place you sent from the council to the third, uh, the here, the there, who knows where we're gonna be placed?
Uh, it's here.
Next Monday night at five-thirty.
Oh, Monday?
Monday night, five-thirty. We'll owe you a meeting.
Yes, you will.
With air conditioning. We normally don't have this many people here.
This is running through my mind, uh, you know, I know these functions, you know, usually have alcohol involved. You have a wedding, you have a wedding dance, you have alcohol involved. While they would have to apply for a specially vet liquor license and that would have to come before the commission. Now, the problem you have with the situation, that's fine and dandy, but if you have a bunch of people that are opposed to this and they start denying the special event liquor license, they would end up having established that would not be allowed to liquor unless they furnished themselves. So just, just for a point, I think there's something that has to be clarified there. Unless one of the attorneys wants to set me straight on that, I'm not an attorney, you may have an event center that you may not be able to have alcohol involved and that may affect what you're gonna do for weddings, family reunions. And I'm not a proponent of a, a large alcohol consumption, but I do realize that if you're gonna have these events, it usually draws down to having some type of party atmosphere. And I think you have to take that into consideration if you're building a building like this and there's one incident and all it would take is one incident and, uh, with the discussion I've, the people out there aren't happy this is going there and all it would take is one incident and they may not be able to get a liquor license after that. But the special event license has to come through the commission and people can oppose that.
It would come up for each event. Yep. All right, uh, that's all we have. If the county has anything more?
Second.
Moved by Fishback, second by Sutton to adjourn on the county side. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll, we'll give everyone a chance to leave who wants to leave and allow those who want to stay now for the city commission portion of this to sweat along with us here for a while.
Could've cranked that thing down to fifty, I don't think it would've made a difference.
Should've run it down to fifty in the middle of the afternoon.
It won't go that far down. The range is like 69 to 70.
78?
All of that.
It was, mostly 78.
It came back down.
Okay. I took off mine right away, Rob. I took mine off and laid it down.
You know it's warm when an attorney takes their coat off.
All right, with that, we'll call the room back to order, and entertain a motion to approve the city council meetings of June 18th.
Move.
Second. Motion Buzna, second by Johnson. If there are no changes, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Our consent counters, routine city business items A through H, need a motion on that?
Move.
Second. Motion Remley, second by Rux. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That carries. And stepping back, just, I was not aware that we have a person signed up to speak in relation to the promotion fund. Mr. Schmidt, if you still wanna speak, when we get to that item on our agenda, we'll let you talk then. Next item on our agenda is new business, a city rezoning, ordinance 180601.
Move, approve. Oh, sorry.
The petitioner is requesting this petition to rezone in order to bring the property into a zoning district that is consistent with its use as a single-family residence. A zoning permit for the placement of an accessory structure was issued at the time of this petition to rezone. The Aberdeen Planning Commission approved the petition to rezone on June 19th, 2018. Staff recommends approval.
Second. Motion Rux, second by Renee. Questions on this one? Roll call for first reading, please. Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. And Ken, the next is ordinance 180602, rezoning.
The petitioner is requesting this petition to rezone in order to bring the property into a zoning district that is consistent with its use as a single-family residence, and will allow for residential development. A building permit to construct in addition to an existing accessory structure was issued at the time the petition was filed. Staff recommends approval.
Move.
Second. Motion Buzna, second by Johnson. Questions on this? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. And the next is also rezoning, ordinance 180605.
The petitioner is requesting this petition to rezone in order to bring the property into a zoning district allowing for residential development. Staff recommends approval.
Move.
Second. Motion Buzna, second by Olson. Questions on this? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is a tax increment finance district project plan, project number 29. Jeff, did you wanna just give us a brief introductory rundown of this?
Brief?
You took the words right out of my mouth. I will comment on how well the building holds heat though. Nicely done. This is actually for a piece of ground we've recently purchased just past a half-mile line north of Holgate, just past a half-mile north of Holgate, that we hope to actually have under construction yet this fall. A few challenges to this piece, more than we've seen with some of the other properties we've been able to develop around town. We've been, appreciate the efforts of the city, planning, zoning, and engineering department to help us work through some of those issues, to keep this project under, with the wheels underneath the project. It's probably the most expensive one we've ever done by far. Total project costs about $2.7, $2.8 million for 83 lots. I did get the number right this time. Including quite a lot of infrastructure, lift stations, and things of that nature. First one of what we anticipate to be two phases to develop this piece of ground. So, on a different note, though, after sitting through an hour of the previous discussion, I have had people tell me in this community that if I would've had my way, I wouldn't have let you develop that land for housing. And I'm always struck to say, then where would these people be? So, I know change is hard, but sometimes it's inevitable, and sometimes it's, I know I can feel for the folks here and everything too, but if dust and noise and alcohol and noise till late at night is a problem, we should shut the races down too. 'Cause I hear every bit of those. So, just another way to look at some of that. And I, for sitting in that chair for a few years, I appreciate your efforts to at least keep this, to keep the city in the forefront of moving that along.
Glad your rezoning went well.
Yeah.
I was, you know, by the time it got to me, they were like, "Let's get out of here. It's time to go. Whatever you want, we'll do it." So, that was easy. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Renee, and second by Rux. Questions on this at all?
Yeah, I have a question. One of my TIF-hating friends asked me to ask this question.
Oh. They can always pick up the phone.
Has the TIF laws changed to include leverage assessment as well? I mean, like 20, 40, 60?
The phase-in? We don't take the phase-in.
Okay.
We never have, and at this point, never will.
Okay, well, can that happen? I mean, is, there's a TIF law?
Well, you always have the opportunity to do it.
But not to get a TIF then, on top of that?
Oh, yes. You can do a TIF where the phase-in is 20, 40, 60. I would like to see how you'd make it work, 'cause I do not think it would pay off in the 20 years. Now, we did have with the first subdivision we built down by Central, which is all multifamily, most of those properties did take the phase-in once their properties were built, because as a multifamily, they can do that 20, 40, 60, 80. And Carl, you might know this better than anyone for the, no, sorry. Don't wanna let you know what's going on here. For that first subdivision at Central, TIF 20, was that five?
19.
Oh, was it 19?
15.
No, this was the first one at Central, called the multifamily.
Thought it was 19.
Was that 19?
19.
Okay. I believe the last time we talked, that TIF is doing quite well. I mean, is...
Now it is. Started out slow because of that ramp.
Because of the phase-in. But it still does work if your plan works and if people build. If people don't build, nothing works. It doesn't matter what you, whether you're using the phase-in or not, it's not gonna work. So...
He called it double dipping. What does that mean?
Oh, I'll...
Typically, we have...
I just had to put that away for a minute, because I almost said something I might've regretted. It means he needs to look further into TIF and understand them better, because there is no double dipping.
Okay.
Plan it's...
I'll pass that.
Typically, with the residential TIFs, we've had them forego the discretionary formula.
Yep.
There's only one TIF, I think, that we have done where, that is like this, when that was the apartment building, because it was taken in a piece of property that had already taken the phase-in. And that was those apartments, or the depot.
The depot.
That took the apartments that had already taken, that's the only one we've ever, ever done that has taken the discretionary formula.
And is that working?
Yeah.
They all work.
Yeah, they all work.
Yeah.
They're all doing well.
If your plan doesn't show that, I mean, if you can't do it with the numbers that are right there, you shouldn't approve it. I mean, and I don't think this body has ever done that. I mean, the numbers show that if people build, now, if the property sits and nothing gets built, nothing works. I mean, it just can't, 'cause your increment doesn't develop. Can I ask a question?
Ron?
Do you mind? I wanna ask you a question, Jeff. Should the council approve a TIF that won't pay out by the end, and where the developer will end up eating a portion of, if they're self-financing, for example?
You're asking me a philosophical question?
Yes, I am.
I took a philosophy class in college.
It's a long time ago.
It lasted about a week. That's a decision, unfortunately, you guys get paid to be bucks for.
But with happy living in the TIF world, where the foundation, the stability of the TIFs requires that they're being paid back when the developer says they will be paid back, does that concern you if there was a planned deficiency at the end of the 20 years?
We haven't seen this, but if the plan talks about it.
It is if it's self-financed, where the developer... Yeah, most for-profits are self-financing. So, I mean, they're putting their money on the line. I would wonder, hmm, I would wanna think about that. I mean, part of me says, "Well, it is their money," and part of me also says, "Why would you do a project that you know you're not gonna make work?" Thank you.
I think your TIFs, though, are happy it worked really well for us.
Well, it, you know, it just seems like they get every year just a hair harder. You know, the numbers go up, the costs go up. It's been tough since the interest rates have gone up too, 'cause that makes a big difference. I'm very pleased to say that we are actually getting a better interest rate on this TIF than we've had in quite some time, about 3.5%, which is down over almost a point and a quarter from the previous one. We are kinda hoping that this TIF won't, we won't build out in a year, so I won't have to come back in another year. So, maybe take a little break in here, maybe two years, three.
Hey, any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thanks for your work, Jeff. That's it. The next item on the agenda is the submission of the city council's proposals for the 2019 promotional fund. Oh, I'm sorry, this is pointed time for hearing on application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine license for Melinda Sletton and Platinum Salon and Spa, 714 South Main. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this? If not, we need a motion to approve it.
Move.
Second.
Motion Remley, second by Renee. Questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item F now to this. This is the city council proposal for the 2019 promotional fund budget. This has gone through the process of each individual council member making their allocations in a process that we have worked out over the years to give everyone a fair opportunity to request money, give all the council members a fair opportunity to make their judgments, and theoretically, live with the results. Doesn't mean we have to, but it's been our practice over the years that once we've gone through the process, unless something unusual has come up, we've lived with the results of the math, as Lynn has calculated it. Lynn, anything you are offering us, anything you wanna add before we take this up?
I was asked a general question earlier with the overage, if it created any problems. And Carl and I both agree that we are comfortable with the slight overage of $8,000, and don't believe there needs to be any adjustments for it.
Okay, I would entertain a motion from, do we need any action on this, or is this just...
Yes, I'm asking that there be a motion to approve the budget median calculations for inclusion within the 2019 budget proposal, and that budget proposal then be made on July 30th, 2018, and then first reading on September 4th, and second reading on September 17th.
Okay. We need a motion to open the discussion, and if somebody wants to speak, we'll allow them to then.
Motion to approve.
Motion Olson, second by Slate Hanson. Questions or comments on the motion from the council?
You know, if I could, Mayor, you know, I don't understand what we're doing on this. It's my understanding that when we actually approve the budget, we are approving this.
Right.
Is this just to tell you to make it part of the budget?
This is to tell them to put in the budget.
But this is a non, you know, we don't, this is a non-appellable, this is a non-binding or something.
This is not a budget allocation. This is a...
It's not a budget allocation, it's a recommendation. It's a sense of the council resolution.
Right.
Do we need a motion to do that?
It's a procedural thing that Lynn wanted the affirmation of the council, that his calculations and his submission of this is what we wanted.
Well, if that's the case, then I think we need to go back and look at the calculation. I didn't look at, I mean, Jennifer found an error in the calculation last year. Maybe we should take a quick look at that before we approve it.
I asked him to make sure the zeros were in this year, so he did do that.
Also, why didn't we put the names on top of this year? I thought we were gonna be very transparent and include the names.
There was one version earlier.
There was a version, but this is the public version, and it doesn't have the names.
Well, anybody's free to put that out. So, it's probably, did you have something you wanted to say?
I don't really have any discussion. I'm Martin Schmidt, and myself, and Scott Nolte are here on behalf of the board of directors and the entire Aberdeen Swim Club. This is the first year that we have applied for the promotion fund, or submitted a request. So, we just wanted to be here, see the process, be here for discussion if there is any.
Okay. You actually picked a bad year to make it your first year. The new people did not, were not greeted positively this time. There just wasn't much room there. And so, we have a motion and a second to tell Lynn to go ahead with what he's done.
So, changes still can be made.
In the budget process.
And will this be the last year that we deficit spend? I asked for it last year. I'm giving you another year. Next year, we're gonna toe the line.
If you look at mine, there's all kinds of extra.
There's always extra in yours. That's predictable, Jennifer. We account for that at this point.
I know you do.
So, I just wanted to make the point that we still can make changes if someone puts an argument.
We can all, almost always change almost anything we do.
That's right. It's true. Okay.
So, we have, anybody else?
I do agree with Dave. I don't like deficit spending on this. And it's, I think, next year, like I say, well, I'll be with Dave on that one.
That's a rounding error. $9,000 out of a million.
Yeah, there's a lot of rounding errors on that.
Well, $9,000 out of a million, that's a rounding error.
And I agree with you guys. I don't, and again, you know how mine is, it's always skewed from everyone else's. But I feel like this year, because of the tightness with it, and because I was really pleased to see that we didn't have to make major cuts, or we didn't make major cuts to the folks who've depended on us in the past, that this one year, we can, you know. So, I agree.
Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Try again next year. Next item on the agenda is a possible approval of an agreement with Clark Engineering related to groundwater supply expansion. Is that you, Robin?
I'm one of, Bob's gonna weigh in probably, and Lynn, I don't know in what order you
which lays out the timeframe. This is a very aggressive timeframe, but one we feel, given the drought that we're experiencing right now and so on, we want to do as much as we can to move this process ahead and try to find some additional groundwater sources before we feel like we stepped in a year too late. So, this is going to be a very aggressive timetable. We have asked Clark Engineering and their partner, Wink and Associates, to do this in this timetable, and they have assured us that they will get us close to those timetables.
Bob, do you have comments?
Just that it's good that we get a source of water other than relying on the river. It'll help cut down on our taste and odor issues, as well as have liability as Aberdeen expands.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Renee, second by Bunsoness, and it's...
Before we go on, how is the motion?
Motion is to approve an agreement with Clark Engineering for professional services to expand the city's groundwater supply in the amount of $250,905.
I'm asking for slight language change within the motion where it reads to authorize to sign the agreement if acceptable of Clark Engineering.
So, would entertain a motion then to, we don't need a motion, we're just changing, we're changing the word approved to sign?
Yep.
Is that all right?
If acceptable, and the reason I asked Lynn to request that change is because we do want to give clarification on the schedule and make sure that there's a little more tea to that.
Okay, is that all right with the motion and the second? Okay, so...
I never got to make my comment. The other two went, and I'm going to come back to our strategic plan when we met. This was considered to be a number one priority of the city, and I think Robin, as well as Bob, explained, you know, the issues that we have with water, and we're doing fine at this point, but I think, like our forefathers that actually did the reservoirs, I think if we start looking into the future, we see this as a definite need for the city to do expansion.
We have a motion and a second. Other questions or comments from the council? All those in favor of signing that agreement then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Bob. The next item is from Robin, change order and a subsequent payment of $34,297 to Ringenberg Electric for work on the traffic signal.
You know, by and large, this project is complete. It's working great, and we're basically paying them out for everything. The change order is adjusting some of the things that were done in the field. As you'll see, it's actually a negative change order in this particular case, and we are holding 1% until all the paperwork is completed, and then we'll move ahead with things here in a month or so.
Move to approve the payment and the change order.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Bunsoness. Questions on it from anybody? Carl, roll call.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Bills presented for payment tonight, Northwest Energy Utilities, $17,018. Nationwide Employment Benefits Insurance, $97. MetLife Cobra Payment for Vision, $559. South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance Insurance for Ambulance Equipment, $261. A background check for Human Resources to OneSource, $27. May insurance payment to Wellmark Blue Cross, $28,743. Business Improvement Disbursement to the District, $3,059. An interest payment of $16,120 for TIF 21 to Chris Frost. A TIF interest payment to Depot Revival LLC in the amount of $10,587. Hotel reimbursement for the ambulance division to Mitch Ammon, $587. NVC charges for June for RideLine, $249. Fleet services for fuel at the fire department, $4. UPS charges, $71. Law code enforcement abatement to David's Lawn, $298. J&amp;K mowing for mowing abatement, $606. Prepayment by the fire department for a piece of equipment to McQueen Emergency Group, $252,815, and the May CVB occupancy tax of $26,940.
Second.
Motion, Slate Hanson, second by Remley. Questions on any of those? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item J is payroll, June 10 through 23, and City Sheriff's Social Security, old age, and survivors, insurance, retirement, health, and life.
Move.
Motion, Johnson, second by Remley. Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries, and it's 78 degrees in here, so I'm assuming there is nothing for the city manager's report tonight?
Correct.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. Motion, Bunsoness, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.